And call meeting to order. Start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call. We have Dave Griffiths, Becky Boynton.
Your mics on.
Oh, yeah. Okay, mine's on.
Yeah. So we fixed our sound system, so it won't pick up any audio unless you're speaking into the microphone.
Okay. So roll call again, we have Dave Griffiths, Rebecca Boynton, Shannon Sturgis, Shannon Snowman, and who else to call you to? Code enforcement officer.
Well, we are today.
All right, to start, meeting minutes from six, six, twenty twenty-three, meeting, motion to approve minutes.
I wasn't there at all.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes submitted on June sixth or four, June sixth.
Can we do that?
We don't have a quorum. So if, because we don't have three that were there. Yeah, we'll have to wait to the next meeting and we'll just approve those then when we have three people that were there.
Okay. Just kidding.
Yes, I love them. All right, next, new business, five point one Church of Pizza, application to start a takeout restaurant at twenty Maple Street. So Ryan, if I recall, when we do this, we start by reviewing the application to make sure that it's complete first, get a motion for that. And then the second step is we have discussion.
Yeah, so you guys can review it right now for completeness and then second step is the applicant can talk about it and you can ask some questions. And then from there, you know, we keep going.
Okay. And we norm.
This one does not. So this is more of a, it's a development review. So council would review new ordinances. Yeah, this one's just us.
And typically the process is when we do the review is we go page by page, right, as a group.
Yeah, through the application, yes.
All right, so page one, any questions?
I do not have any questions, no.
Dave, you good?
Yeah.
Page two.
You got this all underlined, Ryan. On page two.
Yeah, which one?
On page two, we've got a lot of highlights.
Are you looking at the application?
I think that's.
Application. Yeah, a couple more pages.
Okay. Page three. Good, Dave.
Number of abutters.
Oh, that's natural.
Eight point five three. There are twenty-three abutters.
Within five hundred feet of the property. Yes, we have to go from one edge of the parcel, go five hundred feet one way, five hundred feet the other.
Leaving it at the total number of twenty-three.
Correct, yes. And those are attached near the end of the packet here. I have that as supplemental to this. There are a couple of supplemental, like the floor plan. There's a survey we had on file of the property and a couple more pictures.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes. Yes, yeah, we sent those certified mails two weeks ago.
All right, so that was page two, page three. Any questions? Shannon, good.
What is the, so I see areas within two hundred feet proposed development shall be included point four eight. And then there is just a difference with the currently developed.
Yeah, point zero five six.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's how much the house takes up, the structures on the parcel, yes.
Thank you.
There's a limitation on that, right? If I remember right, is that seventy-five percent?
It's seventy percent, yeah. Yeah.
All right, page four.
Four, yes.
Number of abutters required by ordinance you asking me.
Correct, and it looks like they have ten.
Questions on that?
No, ma'am.
Um, page five. What kind of construction? It says as soon as approved, what kind of proposed construction?
Yeah, if your applicant's here, hit that mic button and it'll turn green and your microphone's on, so you can talk to them about, they are on this page here.
We're just asking about what's the, so there is on number twenty-three, proposed construction schedule as soon as approved. So we're just looking for some clarity.
Everything is already an existing structure. We didn't have to do any type of construction. The entire building was already there. Our only issue we ran into was when we were having the propane installed. We were told, code enforcement spoke with fire marshal, said that we didn't need to vent the oven, but the propane company insisted that it, that it needed to for state guidelines. So we did end up venting the oven and that's all passed. And that was the only, only thing that we had to do as far as like cutting into the building for any construction type situation.
And is there a requirement for that paperwork to be submitted?
So I'll clarify, the fire marshal did not have to review the plan. It's not that we didn't have to do ventilation, it's just that they didn't have to do a plan review. With your certain square footage, or if you have a certain type of equipment, they have to do plan review. So your question was.
I was just wondering, so as soon as approved, it's already existing construction. But she had stated that the state required some venting above the oven, is that correct? Yes. Is, are we required to have that documented or a track record of that or?
Yeah, so a part of this, once we have this approved, I have in the motion, I have suggested motions right before the application that you include that as one of the conditions.
Good, yeah.
Awesome.
Any other questions on page five?
That's all I have, thank you.
Shannon, good? Dave? All right, so I will entertain a motion for the completion or completeness of the application to start.
I second that.
All right, application is complete.
Yeah, and if you continue on your packet, you'll see the tax parcel on the next page and then you'll see the abutters. And then you'll see the deed showing ownership. I'm gonna scroll down here, there's the abutters, there's the deed showing ownership. Next page is the floor plan. So essentially you enter through here, there's a wall here, oven's back here, there are sinks over here. It's a hundred fifty-six square feet. And then the next page is a survey of the parcel that we had on file already. This was before that addition was built, so essentially right here, there's a little square there now, and that's where this is. But this property was surveyed, we just had it in the file. And then next page, you'll see the location. It's right here, so there's the main light there in town, you just head south on eleven, you turn down Maple, it's right here beside Down East Machine and Engineering. And then the next page is a picture of the structure and you'll see right here is that add-on I was telling you about. That's what you see on the floor plan. Yeah. And then, yeah, next page is, yeah, it's the letter sent to abutters here. And that's the end of the application.
And so this is the actual location where the business will be set. Thank you. Great.
Okay. Then if we look at, Ryan, did you want to cover this? Like what? What was outlined in this?
Yeah, so I wrote a letter to the planning board, so with this one, so when we look at through our ordinances, we do have an ordinance that says, road frontage in this area is one hundred, one hundred feet per principal use and ten thousand square feet of land area. So when you look at our ordinances, it states that we can waive the additional road frontage and land area requirements, which is what I put in here. Essentially, what happened was, so I had heard there's a pizza place opening and I'm gonna try to summarize this. I went there and I brought this application and I said, hey, you gotta go to planning board and apparently there was a conversation I didn't know about that took place where she thought she didn't have to have planning board approval, okay? But I said, you do. So she filled it out and, but she had already had most of the stuff done at that point. But essentially as a part of that, when we first had that conversation, I said, you know, you need planning board approval. One of the reasons why is, well, all new businesses do, pretty much. I mean, there are some home occupations that you don't have to, but most do. A part of that is waivers, okay? So sometimes projects need waivers, sometimes they can't meet the parking requirement, so they need a waiver for that. You do not. But one thing you do need a waiver for, that the planning board can grant, is for the road frontage. So essentially the parcel has a hundred and nine feet, right? So right down here, you'll see a hundred nine point three one, that number, but you need a hundred per use. So you have a home and you have a business now, and so that's a hundred per use. In my letter, I say, essentially there was a bought a redemption business here, okay? That was a home occupation business, meaning for some reason that is classified as a home occupation, you don't need all the additional road frontage, all right? However, we cannot classify a takeout pizza place as a home occupation, it just doesn't fall under that category. So it's its own separate use. So essentially they have a hundred and nine feet of frontage, but by ordinance, they need two hundred. But you as a planning board, I submitted the ordinance, can grant a waiver for that additional road frontage and say you don't need it, you're still approved, right? But essentially I outlined the facts of that, that they have a hundred and nine feet of road frontage, that the parcel's zone downtown business. The road frontage required is a hundred feet per use. The parcel already contains a single family dwelling. So that's, that's where you have the single family dwelling and then you have, right on the side of it, you have this little structure here where they wanted the business to go. And then in the past, it had the bottom redemption that did not require the additional road frontage. So if you go onto the next page, I have suggested motions, right? So one for approval, one for denial, so you can make an approval with a waiver from the road frontage and land area requirements, and then you can put on conditions. Those conditions are up to you. So a lot of the times we say no outside storage, so you can't store stuff outside. Signs must meet the mechanical sign ordinance, ample parking must be required or must be provided for clientele. I'm just gonna go up to this letter so that anyone listening in can also see it. Right here, for approval. Let's zoom in on that. There we go. And then area use for business must be upgraded to newest applicable building codes. That's just for the, the oven that was added, has to have that been added, so that's that part we talked about earlier. For denial, you would just say it doesn't have enough road frontage and it can't contain two principal uses. And when you go onto the next page, I show you another ordinance. So the planning board may waive the additional road frontage and land area for multiple principal uses within a single structure, and this is right out of our land use ordinance on page forty-five, right here at the bottom, forty-five. So I printed that for the planning board and there are the stipulations, but one of them is there's no residential uses in the structure, but you can still grant like a general waiver from it. This would just be what I consider like an automatic waiver, meaning you could just, it could just automatically be waived. But with that said, we do have a provision that you can give a waiver for any performance standard whatsoever through, through our land use ordinance. And then in this page, I show the downtown business requires ten thousand square feet per principal use and a hundred feet of road frontage per principal use. So that's all your supplemental documentation there at the front, just outlining the ordinances.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So the dimensional requirements, this would be ultimately two principal uses, right? Because you've got a residence and then you have what is essentially a commercial business, we call it.
Yeah, correct. It'd be, well, by ordinance, when you look through our land use ordinance, which is here, the definition of a restaurant is anyone that's, that makes and serves food to the public. So even though there's no one's gonna be sitting in here, it's takeout only and delivery. It's still considered a restaurant under ordinance. So with that said, yeah, a restaurant's a principal use and a residence is also a principal use. So it would be two principal uses on one parcel.
And so I, when I was looking at the ordinance going through this, I saw that restaurant falls under commercial use.
Correct.
Which has fifteen hundred, is the dimensional requirements different because it's commercial use? Because I feel like I thought I saw that in there when I was looking at that.
Yeah, so that's one of the waiver requirements. If you are gonna grant a waiver, you could do that up to fifteen hundred square foot per commercial, for residential use and one thousand square feet per residential use. That's essentially where your power for a waiver comes from.
All right, that's what I was wondering. Um, anybody have any thoughts I wanna talk about?
So. Granted, a lot of waivers, when we do something like that, that's our precedent for somebody else.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Because especially on the road frontage piece, like that's my biggest concern, because during our workshop we had last week with the council, road frontage was an issue with that one. And I know multiple times in which someone has come to us requesting to do something and they couldn't because there was road frontage restrictions. That's a big one, like, and I know Ryan specifically has told people in the past, you know, that's what's going to prevent you. And I know we've done some things to be lenient in our code with that and other zones to help address that and it continues to be a conversation, but I think that's definitely one of the things, if we do for one, then we have to do for all.
Is that true?
It's a yes and no. You have to have reason, essentially. There have been towns or cities that grant certain waivers for some projects and not for others. But the issue is if you have a similar type business in a similar situation later and you do it for one, you don't for another, like that's where it can.
So.
Yeah.
My only concern with it, I, I love waiving stuff. However, comma, dramatic pause. The required road front is two hundred and we're two hundred, yes?
Correct, it would be two hundred for two principal uses.
And we're looking at a hundred and nine. So that's like half up, I mean. I would be more apt to lean towards a waiver if it was like a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety, or if it was just not half of what was required, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and it's not that, it's, I'm not, not leaning towards that, however, if we're gonna make an exception for a business that's almost half of what's required, are we opening a can of worms for?
I think with this particular ordinance, we are just because of the fact that we see so much volume related to road frontage. I think if it was, you know, I know in the past, if it was a parking issue, we've looked to leave parking before and what was it, the cannabis company, they needed a certain amount of parking, but it didn't make sense because it wasn't like, you know, they had enough parking for as much volume as they were gonna get, that makes sense. Right, but where we see so much coming through on the road frontage piece and, you know, we've already told a lot of people and kind of turned them away saying, or not turning them away about pointing them to the ordinance and we didn't, you know, show any leniency there, I find it hard to do it, but.
Can you turn on your mic? Sorry, it's just so people at home can hear.
Um, I'm just thinking that we waiver something like this for a takeout and not a sit, a restaurant where people go in and sit down. From a practical point of view, we're running a business. Given granted, a waiver would be fine here, because this is a different kind of restaurant. That wouldn't be backed up by the ordinance, I know that. You know what I'm getting at?
No, I do know. The only sort of advice I could give you on this realm is, for example, we've granted a waiver on the four unit per building rule. So there was one time where someone wanted to do a seven unit apartment building, but our ordinance restricts you to four for any, any change of use or new structure, but we granted it. Now, if someone else came along and said they wanted to do six units in a very similar situation and we denied it, that would be an issue.
Right.
So I guess there's two things, one, you have to have logic behind it and two, you gotta do it consistently. You gotta have the same lean. Now, if someone else wanted to do something very different, but it was also a restaurant, it doesn't mean you have to be consistent at that point. You just have to have a justification and you have to have, yes, be consistent, because waivers are meant to be for those special situations like, was it Eclipse, the cannabis building? And see with them, they just had such a large building and so much square footage that our parking ordinance is done by square footage. And so it made sense for that project. But again, if someone else had the same size building and we didn't, that could be an issue.
But your business is strictly takeout, strictly takeout, like no traffic coming in. Can't even come pick up.
Nope, they come out, they can come out, they pick up and they leave.
And they leave.
And we have two parking areas. Dallas machine just cleared all the trees in my second driveway, so there is ample parking.
Okay, so having said that, it, the, the two cleared parts, does that, is that included in the hundred and nine?
Sure, they did, because at, at the time when they had come, it wasn't usable, but now it's been completely cleared and there's.
It's just, it's just road front.
Yeah, so if you see here, here's a hundred and nine feet, you have one driveway over here and then you have one, it sort of looks just like a roughed in one right here on this survey. And then if you come down here, you can sort of see it right there off to the side.
Yeah.
Right over there and the entrance to the business is right there. So this kind of shows you the parking spaces right here. I mean, the, there is enough room to park side by side right here.
I just. I don't see, I can't predict the future. I don't see a lot of people wanting to open a at-home business on a relatively narrow lot based on this precedent. And I hate to discourage anybody running a business out of their home, home. I just, just seems like the right thing to do in a small town. You know, encourage businesses to serve the public and make some money. I, I know that's not the ordinance, what I just said, but
True.
You know what I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I hate to discourage people based on something we can waive without any great thing, without any harm done.
Well, the other piece of it too, though, that I think we have to think about is like the structure can't contain two principal uses and ideally it is, it, it's not. I guess my thing is, it's not as if it's just one ordinance, ordinance is made up, their, their rules, right, for us to be governed by. And if maybe it was one, I totally would understand that, but you know, we're talking out three various things here that we're saying we're willing to waive as a result.
Meaning the.
I mean, I want.
Road front.
Getting you wrong.
Right. I would love delivery, but so you're talking road front.
Yep.
You're talking dual occupancy and I'm sorry, can you?
Land area.
Land area.
Cause land area would be, what, Ryan, is it, I'm gonna say it completely wrong and I know you probably have the numbers written up on top of your.
Yeah, it's ten thousand per principal use.
Yeah, and they're at.
I don't have the exact figure in front of me, actually. I have the acreage. I think they're, they're pretty close to that, because it's a long, it's like a narrow route, but it's, it's pretty deep back.
Ten thousand per principal use.
Yeah, so that'd be a
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. Let me see if I can find that in the application.
Because it's dual use.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when I did the calculation, they were just sure. It's, that one's not that far off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further conversation, anybody wants?
I just, I, I love the waivers because I think we have to be flexible, encourage businesses in this town and I don't see this precedent weighing us down in the future, but I could be wrong.
I just don't know if another business came to us or anybody said, well, you denied me. Why did you deny me and not this? What are we gonna, and we're just gonna be like?
Well, we like pizza.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just.
I mean, they could.
Setting us up. Yeah. We would have no leg to stand on, because they're gonna be like, you did for them, you waived not one, but three, like Shannon was saying.
See how she treats me. And, and I guess that would be my only concern, like I'm all about like, let's get open, local businesses open.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the.
Eat in town.
It's the.
We have nowhere to eat.
We are so far off from the road front, a hundred and nine is almost fifty percent of what's required. So, I mean, I would be more apt to
That sounds more reasonable.
It was like a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty, you know, it's not that I'm against it, it's just a, we have to continue to have a leg to stand on, you know, if we're gonna make waivers, you know, I, I just don't feel it would be justified for almost a fifty percent cut in the road front. Is there any way that you ladies could acquire more road front? Acreage type of thing.
I, I don't, I don't know. I.
Sure.
This person part about the road front is part.
Sure.
Um, I just, I figured I know, like as far as like the front. I mean, I don't, I don't see that much being utilized. I think we have plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Uh, between both the driveways that, and when we're having delivery, most people are gonna, aren't gonna lean towards wanting to be delivered anyway. Um, and I think it's gonna be a matter of people are just in and out, there's no stopping, there's no hanging out, there's no, you know, there's no options, not doing like in, you know, drinks inside. I, I don't, I wouldn't know how to acquire any actual, I asked everyone saying. I'm not sure of that. I just felt like where it's just such a quick turn around in and out.
Sure.
It's not establishing work, saying and lingering. We're very much going to be blocking off, so our outback and no loitering signs, no smoking outside the building site, so people are not gathering, people are staying, they're not, you know, we're not gonna make it in, in that, seeing that much inviting, where you
Right.
Stay and hang out. We try to sort of get people in, get people out, which is why we wanted to offer the delivery, for one, because we don't have nobody out here, but also it keeps congestion to, to.
To a minimum.
Yeah.
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 But if we were to turn this down, I would suggest that when we look at our ordinances, we ask ourselves why two hundred feet is a sacrifice. I mean, why is it, why is that such a stopping point for somebody who wants to build a business?
That's why.
We have to be flexible. We, we can't, the ordinances were passed for some reason, I don't know when, but this doesn't seem fair.
Can you, can you speak to that, Ryan?
That goes into a much bigger conversation, but I'll summarize it. Essentially in the nineteen nineties, nineteen eighties, a lot of towns with being afraid of any additional growth, put in ordinances that are more strict than their current development patterns. Yeah, and so we've learned over time that that doesn't work and that's why everyone's updating their ordinances right now. Like really, a lot of people are updating their ordinances to be a lot more flexible than they were. And that's actually the, one of the things we're gonna be doing over the next few years, the conference of plan, I mean, there's a lot of sentiment about that, so I mean, we very well could go that way ourselves, so.
Yeah, I'd like to. I wanna give people that flexibility. I don't, we talked about this last week. I don't, panic balls would be a place where people don't come because of zoning.
Sure.
We talked about that last week.
I agree.
And that, that was.
Road frontage was one of my big things, you know, when Ryan said, I built the house on fifty by eighty, well, why can't, like, why is it so strict? You know, and I mean, we already reduced in rural and general res because that was two hundred.
Right.
You know, and like, I remember I was trying to build off of my place for my father-in-law and I had to have two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. If I was gonna do that, you know, I mean, I would have lucked out because I would have had a dirt road behind me, but otherwise not, like, and I had plenty of land to do it, so I still question that. But the fact of the matter is, it's still, it's still.
We could use more tax revenue and, and we've got room.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Absolutely, and
The hot topic.
It is, it's, every municipality is going through this right now, across, across the country, really, really across the world, so I would just.
That is the only thing that's preventing us, is really the, that's the trend, or I should say, like, that's how it's always been.
Essentially, it was meant to make things harder to do and kind of slow things down, because there was a lot of worry in those days, but now we realize there's a lot less and there's different issues, there's different pressing issues now. In the nineties, you didn't have a housing crisis, right? That's really what it's focused towards.
Less worry, more potential.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, sure. Um, no, you're exactly right. We realized over time it doesn't work. Um, and so. For approval, something I picked up on is another condition. If, if you seek a motion for approval, I would add must continue to be takeout. In delivery only unless, unless approved by the planning board. So that would kind of help with that objection of. The parking and the, the lot size or the, um, the road frontage, because if you put that stipulation on there, if they ever did want to open up seats. They could come back for reapproval and we could then look at the site again and say, all right, well, you got to expand your parking or you have to do this. Um, but hearing everyone talk here, I think that would be another stipulation I would add on, um, and I'll put it on the conditional use permit. If you're gonna seek a motion for approval.
Yeah, I, I, I know, you know how I'm gonna vote and I. Think I said enough.
So, um, I will entertain a motion for approval or for denial at this point with. The outlining conditions. Come on, Dave.
Oh, all right. All right. You want a denial motion, but I say, I don't want to make.
No, I'm, I don't know, absolutely not. I'm just entertaining a motion. I'm, I'm Walter's place, so.
Okay.
Typically, the chair doesn't make the motion. Typically, it's a, it's a member.
All right.
And I do have an outline of that again on suggested motions on one of those pages. And again, I would recommend if you're going for approval to add the stipulation that it can be takeout and delivery only.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the church of pizzas. My church of pizza.
It looks like a church. Okay.
I got you. I got you. It's a good edit. I make a motion to approve the church of pizzas application for development review with a waiver. From the road frontage and land area requirements and also with the following conditions, no outside storage. Signs must meet the mechanic fall sign ordinance. Ample parking must be provided for clientele. Area use for business must be upgraded to newest applicable building codes and, um. What wording you want, I'd be glad to repeat it. What, what works best?
I would say, uh, um, takeout and delivery only unless further approved by the planning board.
Takeout and delivery, delivery only unless approved by the planning board. That's my motion.
There are second.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Yeah.
It's a tie.
Paper, rock, scissors?
So what, what do we do in the time?
Yeah, so in order to have a. Positive motion, we would need majority and Walter's not here today, so he would be the tiebreaker. Um, so I, I would just, the process from here is, is one of two things. We'll either have to continue the meeting into next month when we have five. Or we'll have to hash it out right now. It's.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially we're, we're have to do one or the other.
What's your hesitation, ladies? Like.
All right, Walter's.
If you want to discuss it later, we can certainly discuss that with Walter.
Call.
There's really no pressure.
I just don't see us having a leg to stand on in the future. If anybody else was to come to us, we don't have, we have to draw the line somewhere. Maybe. Down the line when we hash out, potential road frontage, we can revisit. But I think doing. I think we're putting the horse before the race, if I'm saying that right.
I think so.
Yeah, the road frontage thing is a big thing for me and I get what you're saying, Dave. Like, we don't want to prevent, but because we've seen such a trend. With people asking and being prevented from being able to do things because of road frontage, I just feel like it opens up a box of worm, like a box of worms, you know? Or whatever.
And in all fairness.
I think that's just my biggest concern.
Discussion.
Get an influx. I can almost feel it.
Yeah.
If we let this go, even with just that.
Because like you said, with the road frontage, it's fifty percent or maybe fifty-two percent.
I'm just throwing this out there. Like, are we able to, at some point? Readjust the road frontage for the type of business that it is? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, so obviously takeout. Delivery type of thing is not gonna need the same type of road frontage that like Dad's place or Cumbie's would need. Cumbie's, is that a technical term? Cumbie's. Do you know what I mean? Like, or like Future Foods or, you know, it's, it's a strictly. Are we able to revisit that? I mean, if we're not, fine, but is that something that we would be able to entertain?
When you.
For that reason.
I mean, the language around waivers is you have to have a reason, right? It has to be a justifiable reason. So. Really, that would just fall under that category of it's a justifiable reason. Um. In terms of relooking at the ordinance, I mean. There could be some wording, I'd probably have to run it by the attorney. Um, we are gonna be reviewing the downtown business ordinance.
With gen code?
Um, that'd be in-house with us and our attorneys. Um, we, I remember the. The meeting that we just had and we went over like three different ordinances for downtown business. And how they all three said different things. So we are actually gonna be visiting this exact ordinance over the next. Probably spring, like late winter into spring, we'll be reviewing this anyways.
Given the, the fact that somebody wants to do something, what would be wrong with taking this ordinance? And addressing it because there's a, a need and take it to the council. And say, we have a problem here with somebody who wants to open a business. And is it possible for us, in this one incident? To, uh, address that ordinance? Doesn't all have to be part of the package of ordinance.
Yeah, that's, it's within the power of the planning board to bring forward conversations like that. And you could even hash it all out right here. And just make the recommendation to the council that they change it and then they get to vote yes or no on it.
Yeah.
Right? We'd have a joint meeting and then they would vote it through or not. So that's the process there.
I don't know.
We haven't done that before for other people, though. Like that have, have had certain one-off situations. Like that gentleman that was on Brown Road that he had a situation, like there's been people that have come up before in the past. I mean, not to say we can.
Right, of course.
But.
Those were explainable. Those were legit, like we.
We didn't even do it.
We had a reason.
Except like I feel bad, like if we turn people away, but I mean. It doesn't.
Well, I mean, if you don't want, if you don't want to follow that procedure, I'd say we wait till Walter shows up. I don't know what he's gonna say, but.
So I guess my question would be is, other than ordinances, like. Why would we turn people away? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, other than, because the ordinances are rules, right?
Yeah, they are the law.
So I, I ask the request from the ta- taxpayers, you know, that sort of thing, sometimes approved. When we change ordinances, they have to get approved by the council. Like, I like to stick. To the rules because then we don't run into those sticky situations, which historically has caused us as a town to have problems. And that's my only.
If, if we have not responded to a request that. We can't, um. Honor under ordinance in the past. I don't see why we can't, in this case. Do the right thing, which is, let's talk about an ordinance, narrowly defined ordinance for takeout. And do, is it reasonable to have a two hundred foot, uh. Frontage.
For takeout only.
Bring it to the council.
And bring it to the council and it would just be this one narrow, and we could base it on what these ladies have brought up and it would apply to anybody else in that case.
For takeout and delivery.
Takeout, delivery only with ample parking, sign ordinance and so forth.
So then we're basically, we'd have to modify the definition of restaurant, right? Would, would that be?
We would.
I feel like it'd be above and like.
We would have to probably create another definition in our, because that comes from the definition section of our land use ordinance. We just have to create another definition. A subsection probably of restaurant to more define what we're, we're getting at.
Yeah, I think if we do that, I mean. I would show up at the council meeting to make sure, you, you'd explain it better. But it's just a thought to help somebody who wants to make some money in our town. And pizza happens to be my favorite food, so I'm. Yeah, I love it. Anyway, um, does that make sense? To at least, um, it would be, we'd be setting a precedent, but you know, our hands aren't tied. We can change the ordinance. Or suggest, we can't change.
We can.
We can.
We can ask.
And I, I should clarify too. So with the Board of Appeals, I'm, I'm rethinking the tie here. With the Board of Appeals, we have three members right now in this, um, but you need five essentially. Um, so we're trying to recruit two more members. However, I did ask the attorney about the Board of Appeals and they stated that in order for anyone to be approved. It, all three would have to say yes, because it has to be three out of five. And so if they had to. Say yes and one say no, even though they had the majority, they didn't get three.
Right.
So I guess the question in my mind is if two of you say yes and two of you say no, is that the same principle of only two out of five said yes, therefore it's a straight denial? Or is it just continued to the next month? Um, so I don't want to make that statement. I just want to clarify that. Um, so I don't know if it has any way. I would, essentially the process would be I would reach out to legal and, uh, get a clarif- clarifying answer on that. And now in the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I feel like I'd be okay with that.
If we do, if we do continue. If we do contin- Um, if we do continue though, we will have to resend out of butter notifications.
Yeah.
So not to add. Uh, in that case, we would. Yeah, they paid for the first round.
Seems like the first thing to do, so we're not ignoring the ordinance, we're changing it.
Yeah, and I think it's just to get, like, the additional weigh-in, like from Walter, just to see.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that, bud.
Yeah.
Do we have any other takeout businesses in Mechanic Falls?
Well, technically, no house delivers.
But straight up, strictly taken.
Strictly takeout, none that I know of.
Excellent.
None that I know of.
So it is something that we probably, I mean, I don't know, maybe there is an interest. I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty easy business to operate, really, but.
We've had a really good feedback. Um, we've already made a Facebook page for it and, and. Everywhere, everywhere we go, we're in the town. We've had a lot of feedback. Um, we both have done this, this same job. Um, for other people, so it was an opportunity and we just, you know, see the need for it. Once we, we're. We're done where we were previously employed and it's, it's really, the town has, has really. And they're with open arms and, and are really anticipating it. I have, I feel really well about it. I would feel really proud about it. It literally was like a matter of. A hundred feet of not having road frontage out with you.
Right, right. However, it's still fifty percent. It's a, it's a big chunk and it's not that. Correct, absolutely, certainly, so.
Um, so where do we go at this point?
Um, so I would either need a, a motion, um, I would need a successful motion at this point. So it could be a. Motion to table, um, it could be a, a motion for approval or a motion for denial.
So a table would be like, let's revisit this and talk with a fuller crew?
Right, right.
Yeah, um, but that's again, no guarantee that we'll find a date that, where we have one. So it would have to be in the motion, you'd say a date uncertain. Um, and then I would have to gain contact with everyone and see when's the next time they can meet and.
When's, when's the next meeting?
Uh, it would be, I think November eighth, I want to say that, whatever that, maybe the second Wednesday of the month, I believe.
Okay.
Um, because we meet. We meet the, uh, first Wednesday after the first Monday. So the, sometimes, you know, we have Wednesday before Monday in a month. Um, but even so, we would have to send out a butter notifications and all of that, um, again, so. Yeah.
We know that Walter is gonna be able to make.
And that's, that's my point. We don't know if Walter's gonna be able to make the meeting or not.
I don't know. He, he said he had his second operation set for December. So four weeks, I've had both of these replaced. It doesn't, you're not laid out that long. Therapy.
Well, we can't speak for Walter.
No.
His.
Can't he zoom in too?
All right.
Can he zoom?
Um, we, we still do have an ordinance in place where we can zoom members in. Um, he was not present from the beginning, I don't believe. Um, and he didn't make roll call.
Right.
We do have a one person right now who's in, but not under Walter's name.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to table this so we can redisess this and in hopes that we could get. Five people? Is that, is that what we're shooting for?
Were you also going to check with the attorneys to see, like, if we're?
Yeah, if you, if you, because a motion failed, um, if you do make a motion to table, then we would just have to re-vote on it.
Okay.
The motion failed, but it wasn't defeated. I mean, it's, it's.
Right, it was just.
There's a.
Correct.
Wordiness there that, because.
The other thing that makes us hard is we don't have a defined policies and procedures for the planning board. So we're.
Good. All right.
Yeah.
But that's what we're looking to revisit, perhaps, is a.
But we're.
We don't, correct, because we don't have any takeout businesses in Mechanic Falls.
Well, it's still defined as a restaurant because a restaurant is defined as anyone who, um, serves food to the public.
Okay.
Um, so if you have a takeout places, takeout only, you are still serving food to the public. Yeah, so it still falls under the definition just because of how it's worded.
All right.
So that's why we have to consider it as that principal use.
All right, you have a motion?
You make the motion or?
I'm making a motion to table it so we can redisess it with a fuller crew. If, if, I just think that's just fair.
Yeah.
Just to hash it out.
So motion to table it until.
The earliest possible convenient.
November eighth, if we can get Walter.
You can say a date uncertain if you want to and we, I can do some reaching out. You can table it to a date uncertain. And then, uh, that would give us the flexibility if we could do it. A week earlier or a different day that week if someone couldn't make it.
Okay, so I will make a motion for an uncertain date. To redisess this table issue on takeout.
Sure.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All right, so what that means for you unfortunately is you're still pending until we come up with. A decision. Um, which just means more conversation and more dialogue. So, and I'm sorry, the road French thing, you know, it is really. A stickler just because we've had so many people come, so, um. But yeah, next meeting will be, I guess Ryan will let us know if we do it earlier or whatnot, so.
Yeah, it would really depend on, um, planning board members and their availability because it was a tiebreaker. We want to make sure we had all five there.
Sure. And we look forward to seeing you.
Yes.
Be there, really.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business, six point one, LD two thousand and three.
Yeah, so. This one here, I'll, I'll tee up. So I, I'm still in the process of reviewing this with the attorneys, but I did include. The LD two thousand and three law in your packets. So if you want to, yes, if you want to do some reading on it. There you go. If, oh, where did I put that? I have an email, um. So I, I sent to our attorney to review specific, all of our ordinance. And so we're gonna have that in the coming weeks and by our next meeting or next month, um, I'll have a whole list of ordinances that we. Either have to change or that we could change, or you know, there's gonna be multiple, um, you know, uh. Areas that's either gonna be mandatory or not mandatory, we can decide on those. It might result in a workshop. Um, that we, that we do. Sorry, is my mic there? And, um, to see if we can still allow for dead end roads or if ours is too strict or not strict enough, you know, so I basically. Does not comply with LD two thousand and three, um, because we can't go. Um, the spirit of more housing. Okay, so I made sure, I just want to make. Not against it. Um, additional road frontage requirements per unit, I think we can still do that, but I just asked a clarifying question. I asked him to look at. Let's see, um, allowing for accessory dwelling units on back lots, which we've discussed. I don't think we can prohibit that anymore, but again, I want legal opinion. Um, I asked about. Um, our accessory dwelling unit ordinance and everything else we have to do to it. I, I believe we have to change a couple more items on our accessory dwelling unit. I don't think we can have those when we're occupied anymore. I think we're gonna have to allow them, even if someone doesn't live in them.
The guy on Brown Road?
Which, yeah, that would change as long as one unit was smaller than the other. Cause.
So they can't be the same.
Correct. That would be a duplex and accessory dwelling unit versus duplex is another hot topic. Um, but essentially we can, some municipalities say accessory dwelling units are only six hundred square feet or less. Or a thousand square feet or less. Ours says as long as it's smaller than the single family house. That's the only stipulation. So if it was the same size, technically no, because it doesn't meet the definition.
Right. Okay.
It, it's a minutia, I'll say.
I say, I say it makes it more, that makes it more lenient for people though, because I mean, if you live. If you live in one of like the big um houses on like Elm Street, like those bigger ones and you want something. You know what I mean? Like, why couldn't you have something that's a little bit bigger, you know, and still be allowed? Like the six hundred square feet isn't that big. I mean, it's a really tiny ranch. You know?
Pretty tiny.
Yeah.
It's perfect for my dad and his dog.
Yeah.
That's, that's the part where I felt like we went less restrictive on that. I wasn't there when we changed that rule. Um, but I think that was on purpose, right? Um, but you know, we'll see, we'll see what the attorneys say. That's just a few of them. Um, but we're going to rely on them. Um, they're doing a full ordinance review, which does take time, um, looking through everything to make sure we're compliant. We're also going to have that wording for affordable housing developments. So under the LD two thousand and three, there's a whole section um on affordable housing. So. See, it's a couple pages in right after the definition. So one, two, three, four. Um, it's like the fifth or sixth page, you'll see. Uh, it's section two on page five. And it says affordable housing density. Um, so essentially anywhere where we is a designated growth area. And allows for multi-family buildings, which is three or more units in one structure. Um, and there's a couple other stipulations. We have to allow for um a two and a half times density multiplier. Um, our two designated growth for if they deem it affordable. Okay, only, only in that case. So essentially what that does is um our two designated growth areas are downtown business and highway commercial. Okay, so in those two areas, we may have to have this provision there. Um, where we have to allow two and a half times density and lower parking requirements. So the. The, the relevant areas here, um, you can see eligibility for density bonus. And then as the next page on page six, it'll say density bonus and it says two and a half times the base density is otherwise allowed in that location. So we're in section C. Point one and then point two, we can require no more than two off-street parking motor vehicle spaces for every three dwelling units.
That's crazy. That like doesn't even make any sense. So you're basically saying one dwelling unit isn't even going to have a parking spot.
So the, the hard part, most apartments built today are about two bedrooms. On average, there's some one, there's some three, but it's mostly two. So that means for every six bedrooms, we cannot make them put in more than two parking spots.
What's the reasoning behind that?
It's to encourage affordable housing. The, so when you look at site plan review, if you have this much land area, you know, um, density. You need to, what they're trying to do is incentivize people to, to build this affordable sort of income restricted housing. So how do you do that? Well, you could write a bunch of checks to them to subsidize it, right, which is very expensive. Or you can just say, hey, even though you're not making as much money per unit, you know, maybe you could. If we gave you two and a half times density for the next thirty years, they have to be affordable. Now, after thirty years, they don't have to be. Um, so essentially you can do two and a half times more units, which may incentivize you. To do this instead, even though you're not making as much money per unit, it allows your construction costs to go down because you have a lot more density per acre. But also the less area you're using for asphalt, um, because when you, especially if you have like a ten acre or less parcel, your biggest bottleneck is going to be parking. Like just you only, you can only fill like seventy percent of a parcel depending on the zone. Some of them you can fill less, right? It's thirty percent. Um, but essentially they're saying you can use more area for building and less for asphalt, right? So that's the whole idea behind it. The issue we have is we just have to comply with it, right? But this does pose an issue for small towns because what this is really meant for. Are areas that have a downtown and they have parking garages and they have street parking and.
Right. Because how I'm, how I'm reading this is this is not creating an inclusive environment. And we're just assuming that people in a low income housing are not going to have vehicles if, if that makes sense. So we're going to assume that one out of three people are not going to have a vehicle to park.
Yeah, that's why it doesn't make for like our town, but to his point, if there was paid parking like garages that people had, then fine, that would make sense, but we just.
But we don't have.
Doesn't have that.
So.
Where like visitors are going to park.
Well, that's.
Correct.
I lived in an apartment. We had two designated spots. My mother-in-law would come over and I'm like. And they're not. Don't know where you're going to park.
Yeah, on the street.
Can't come over to my house.
And they're not required to have overflow parking, right? Like, or can we build, could we potentially?
We could not do that site plan. We'd have to allow it.
That's strictly on-street parking. Like, so if we were to create a development, would there be? Street parking outside of said development or it would strictly be onsite parking?
We, we could not require more. Um, but yeah, it would be onsite. So we'd have to, we could require two spots. For every three units. Um, that's the. So maximum we have, we could require.
If we were to have fifty apartments open.
Yes.
We would really only say that. We have thirty-five parking spots for these fifty spots, for these fifty apartments.
Correct. Yes, that's all, that's the. Yeah, so I, I actually went to all the public hearings for this and I also went to all the Q and As. Um, they had a lot of Q and As for people. And at the public hearing, I stated this parking issue is an issue for our small town. That's the only comment I had. I said, I get the reason behind it all and all of that. And I, the only thing I had to say was. The parking is going to be an issue for smaller towns. So there were a lot advocating for, to limit this to municipalities with ten thousand or more. People. Um, I said, instead of doing that, because you just make this parking requirement for municipalities with ten thousand or more that can provide public transportation. And public parking. Um, it, it was pretty much a done deal by then, so it was not amended to that. They didn't listen to me, but um, no, that's, you. We're going to get the language from the attorney and essentially I'm going to try to differentiate between what we have to require. And what we, what we can or cannot acquire, like what, what our options are, right? So that you can know like this is absolutely required and that is one of the ones that are absolutely required.
And is that what you'll bring to the November meeting? Because this all has to be kind of in play by January first, right?
They did extend it from July first this year to January first next year.
Next, January first.
Twenty twenty-four.
Uh, yes, yeah, twenty twenty-four.
So, and this is where my, like, I feel like as soon as Ryan can bring that to us, like, we really need to make that a top priority because. What's happened in the past, regs come in and then we have no ordinances around the things in which we have some say in and then people can just do whatever they want. As long as it's meeting the, the state regs at that point.
Yeah, essentially.
They seem to be behind, you know.
And I, for this one, we were. They extended it because they didn't have the final rulemaking, but we've done it as quickly as we possibly can in terms of, you know. How, 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 how quickly we got the information we needed. What I'm hoping is, yeah, by November meeting, we'll have what we have to do. Um, and then hopefully in December, we can have the council pass it and then we will meet our deadline, right? It is a little rushed at the end, but there are specific things that we have to do no matter what, that are going to be no option to us whatsoever. Um, so that's, I guess that's the good part about this is really, there's not going to be a lot of contemplating. We don't have to have ten meetings over it. It's going to be, we've talked about it. We know what's coming and now it's just kind of, alright, we have the final rules. What do we have to do?
Yeah, and I mean, the focus can really just be like on the things that we have to make decisions on versus the stuff that's a regulatory requirement. Like, do we, I, I mean, how much effort do we have to spend on that? If it's a regulatory requirement, can you? Literally just put it in front of us as a planning board and send it off to council? Or can you send it to council right away? Because we can't change it, right? If it's a regulatory requirement, it is what it is, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of what we do with codification because it's just, here it is, new statutes and wording, right? It was pretty simple. This one, we'll probably have a separate one because it, it's uh actually changing the meaning of the ordinance, right? It's not just grammar and state statute references, right? It's actually changing the meaning. And the reason I say that is there may be options that we have. So I believe there's one where we have to allow. Um, wherever there's water and sewer, we have to allow for, for units. If it's a designated growth area, we have to allow four units in a building. Um, with, you can still do your dimensional requirements, but um. Essentially, there's an option in there that says if there's already an existing unit, we can cap them at two more. Instead of the full four. And if it's vacant land, we have to allow for four, right? But we don't have to put that restriction on. We can still let them do four, even if there's already an existing dwelling unit, right? So that it, there's very small things we can do like that.
Okay.
Alright, so it, it's not going to be a lot of contemplating. I get your points and they're valid. Um, but it's. Something as soon as I hear back, I'm going to put it all together and make sure that we, we can meet on it. And if we have to meet twice in November, you know, then we can, then we can. We can do that, but.
That's what I was thinking. If we, you know, entertained the earlier meeting, like it would help with starting that. Like, as soon as you get the information back, maybe. You know, if everybody's in agreement, we'd love to have an earlier meeting, you know, so we can have, if we know we're going to have a couple meetings because come holiday time. I mean, people's availability seems to be limited, so.
Yeah, so that's something where. Moment I hear back from legal, I can get in touch with everyone and see, see what we, we can do.
You mentioned um, November eighth for the next one. Yeah. I forgot I had vacation that week, but. No, no.
Holiday time.
No, I know. Well, I'll be in Texas, but I can definitely zoom in. If it's legal, based on precedent or whatever.
We, so what happened was the emergency order, I think. Last year, maybe like early last year ended from the state. But we, they still give us the authority to have a local ordinance that allowed it for Zoom participation.
Okay.
I wondered that because I thought it had changed. I thought it had changed.
Yeah, it just went from, you didn't have to have an ordinance because it was an emergency order to now, if you have an ordinance, you can keep doing it. That's the way I understand it.
And we have one of those now.
I can't really think of any reason why not.
It's when he was here in code enforcement. Yeah, he had adopted that.
But, okay, yeah, that's good.
Good. Yeah. And if I'm proven wrong on that, again, I'm a, I'm a double and triple check. It's the way I understand it. I'm, I'm going to make sure that you all know. Okay, that's just again, the way I understand it.
Okay.
Would you be able to do it earlier? Would you, would you guys all be willing to do it?
I can do any.
Mondays. Like, I just really can't do Mondays. I, Mondays are really. Like I could do any Wednesday.
I could do it the week after.
Okay.
And if I'm on vacation on the eighth, um, I am on vacation days, I'll zoom in whenever.
I cannot do the week after.
Alright, so Ryan can't do it the week after, so.
I will be gone that week.
As long as it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, they do. I know. Isn't it amazing?
Already for you, Ryan. Good for you. When's yours, Sarah?
That's right.
On the record.
Do you guys, are you guys trying to make a motion to remove that? I mean. So no Mondays, that's a stipulation.
You just can't do Mondays typically. You just really can't.
And again, we have to send out the butter notifications, um, so I'll have to.
What is the timeframe on, if you'd have to do that again?
I, I wanted to say, I'll have to look at the ordinance. I always do it two weeks ahead of time. I think the ordinance is one week. If I remember correctly. Um, but again, I'll, I like to double and triple check that because I just do it out of habit. I do it two weeks ahead of time anyways, so.
These definitions are very helpful.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, absolutely. That is your copy to keep if you want to read through it. Um, and they did, in this final rulemaking, they did do all the definitions. I know the initial guidance I gave you a couple months ago, maybe even last year, I think it was earlier this year. It said there was a lot of stuff to be had into rulemaking, a lot of rules. We don't know what this means until final rulemaking. Um, so that's, there it is.
You okay over there?
I'm just getting over one of them.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, so essentially what we're looking at is um the next meeting. We'll have better insight. To, we'll have better insight LD two thousand and three. And then if we have to have another meeting, we will, but. We'll see how much information that is exactly.
Okay.
But if, if there is more, if I hear back and there's a lot of decisions to be made, I will get in touch with the planning board and just say we have to meet sooner. Uh, but that's, that'll be our, I know we had a couple months off. That was nice, but yeah. So, but now we, I kind of, three meetings in a week and a half, I know. It's a lot. Um, but with that said, you know, we might have two or three more here at the end of the year. Um, and then, so yeah, are we all good on this topic for now? Do we understand sort of what's coming?
Um, dates from the CEO seven point one.
Yeah, so updates from me. Um, let's see.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess the, the biggest one. The LD two thousand and three, um, and just keeping up to date with that. Um, violations around town, we've, we've had some junk cars cleaned up and some still remain. We've seen a lot of campers recently. Um, some resolved, some not. Some have been ongoing for over a year. Um, so. But just, I, I think I saw three new ones in the last month and a half. So again, we're going to keep working on enforcement with that. Yeah. So, and then in addition, um. Shoreland zoning, um, I, I will, I've been in touch with some shoreline zoning resources. Essentially, we were supposed to. And I think twenty eighteen, upgrade, update our shoreline zoning to the newest rules. Um, I don't think it was like a legal thing, but it was something that the state essentially gave us new rules and said, you should do this. Um, so I, I will bring, bring in, bringing that to you, but I just want to get through this LD two thousand and three stuff first. Um, and then when we get into shoreline, you know, we can do the shoreline and then we can start doing, reviewing our ordinances. Um, that we kind of talked about at our, our joint meeting of saying, hey, which one of these makes sense, which ones don't. Um, and then just going through it and just making sure we're all up to date, all legal. And we understand what's in the land use ordinance. It'll be a good refresher for us to know exactly what's in it. I kind of know it because I'm, I'm in it all the time trying to get people answers. So I've had to study multiple times. So again, we'll, we'll start that process probably late winter into spring. Um, and so that's sort of the, the outlook looking forward. Um, from there, we're still waiting on a cannabis application for the fourth license. Alright, so we will hopefully be seeing that soon. I was just in touch with the owner of the business, um, who asked me some clarifying questions on the development review. Um, one issue we're having is surveyors are like a year out. Um, so I will be waiving the survey requirement. Um, it says in the ordinance, I can waive certain items. When we bring it to planning board, you know, if there's any item I waived that you don't want waived, you can just put that as a condition and move forward. But I figured for review purposes, we waive that for now so they don't have to wait a year to come in front of us. Okay, so I, I thought that was. Uh, the right way to go. And so we will be seeing that soon.
And so this is for a fourth cannabis place in town.
Correct.
Fourth, like.
The last one.
Okay.
The last one, unless someone gives up their license. And then, yeah, yeah, exactly. We, you will see some more construction. Eclipse Cannabis is uh getting back. Um, that site plan was approved um for an adjustment this past year, I think about a year ago, a little bit over a year ago maybe. And they had some issues with construction, but they're right back on it. They just did their footer for concrete. They'll be doing the walls next week and then they're going to start framing. They said it should be all framed up by November. Um, right at five corners.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, across the street from Hannaford. So that's something else going on right now. Um, and then in addition to that, we might have another solar field eventually get to us, but right now it's in the early stages, so. Um, I'm, I have a phone call scheduled. Um, but again, we have a new solar ordinance after the last batch were approved. Um, so we'll see what stipulations are on that and if they can meet it. Um, but that will come before all of you.
The solar array on Lewiston Street is. I saw somebody out there. They, they're making, are they getting, moving forward with it?
Yeah, from, from what I see.
Okay.
Is moving forward. That one, um. Tracked, um, and while they were getting their approvals through CMP and through us and that transaction did close. So that means that it's official, official.
That was the last one we approved, wasn't it?
Yep.
And it's the first one to get started, isn't it?
Yeah.
How crazy is that?
The one on South Main Street, um, I believe that one, that one has expired and they are now zoned out, so that one will not be happening. Um, and the one on North Street, they came for an extension.
Okay, and is that because of like the queue? Like, there's that thing with the queue?
There's, there's just a long queue right now. So there's a lot of solar developments going in. Um, we have seen a large uptick in um solar permits for home scale. So the home scale permitting, I guess there's some companies that have started going into our area or our county for, with their sales team. And I've seen probably six or seven of them over the last month, month and a half, which since I had started a year and a half ago, you know, I'd only seen two. Uh, so it's picked up quite a bit. Um, so we, we will be seeing potentially another solar field. Um, other than that, those are, that's probably the, the end of my CEO updates. Other than um this uh weekend, I'll be going to the International Code. Um, Council's annual conference in St. Louis. So that'll go from, yeah, this Sunday to Wednesday, exactly. Um, so that I will hopefully bring some more stuff back for that, but they have all sorts of stuff around code. And then I'm also looking into a planning conference, which would be more around planning, land use and everything. Hopefully be able to bring some stuff back from that too.
Cool.
Um, so that'd be very helpful for us.
Can I just ask one question? The couple that came in for the joint meeting last week that had the road frontage issue. Did, were you able to look at their thing and confirm if they did in fact have enough road frontage?
Yeah, so I still need to probably look into that and ask legal because on our tax map, it just shows it as a square in the middle of the field. But the survey they showed me actually showed that they have two. Actually showed that they have two hundred fifty feet of road frontage and then it's just bottlenecks. Away. And then it goes back to the parcel, but the thing is that almost looks like it's own land, not a right of way, and technically it would meet the ordinance. So that was something that, again, if our tax records are not updated, we don't know. Um, and so again, that's, I just need to verify that that's a legal way to do it.
Right.
Um, because I, what I think what happened was they had mentioned that their home was actually halfway on someone else's property because someone. Got the survey wrong or didn't survey it to begin with. And because of that, they had to transfer some land, so I, I believe. That whoever the surveyor was came up with the idea of instead of keeping this as a backlot, let's bring a small string of land. Where your driveway is to the road and just make a two hundred fifty foot rectangle. And then you have two hundred fifty feet of road frontage. That may have been just a workaround that they did, so. Again, I, I have to ask if that's legal and if it, it meets the requirements. With, with that said, I, I did have another inquiry about, um, someone else followed up with me about another backlot in the general residential zone where they have three and a half acres. And we require three acres, so they would have to keep. They don't have enough road frontage to split. Because it's long and narrow and they.
Yeah.
Lots. I told them they could do a backlot, but they could only keep half an acre to themselves. And I, and then, but everywhere else, you don't even need an acre. So that's where another one where we get by that ordinance, you know, we'll take a look at that and I'll show you a specific situations where it's like, alright, well, we gotta do something here. Um, so I appreciate you all being on board with that and just looking through them. I hope to bring live examples so that we can see how it affects individuals, you know?
Alright. Not that. Alright, we'll call this meeting then, seven fourteen.
We adjourn.